I guess it was 25 years ago.
No, they're actually, they're relatively short term. They usually only go out about 20 years. And I seem to recollect two of them had something to do with improvements associated with the damage to the piers on the storms.
Okay, so it was a long time.
From the mid 90s. And that would correspond to having a tenor of 2019, 2020. And also, I believe too, that there probably were some harbor funds advanced for those improvements in anticipation of a DBA loan coming in and refinancing those so those funds could get back to the harbor. The other issue that we looked at is you currently have about $20 million of sale lease backs in place when you acquired the leaseholds for Pier Plaza, International Boardwalk, and Redondo Beach Marina. Right now, all the revenue that's being generated from those lease leaseback is being held and basically effectively, a private management company is operating those, collecting the rents, paying expenses, and then they pay the debt service to the bank that made the loan. And then any dollars above and beyond that are remitted on a net basis to the harbor enterprise. So, and they have terms right now, bullet terms, where they would need to be refinanced in 2018. So what we've done is we've assumed, we'd go ahead and roll those in, refinance those as well, to one, take out the refinancing risk, but also to get additional capacity from those properties, once that debt has been completely amortized. And where we would be picking up capacity is right around in years 2027 on out. So again, taking an existing asset that's producing revenue and just trying to maximize the ability to leverage it. So scenario one is our net revenue pledge. So the city would issue revenue bonds. It'd be secured by both the Harbor, Tideland, and Uplands Funds. It would be net of operating and maintenance expenses. We'd look at 30-year level debt service, funded debt service reserve fund. In this situation, our debt service coverage would be 135 times. So every dollar of debt service is covered by a dollar and 35 cents of net revenue. We put in the ability to prepay the bonds after 10 years, which is a standard provision. And then we also use a portion of the proceeds to prepay the DBA loans, as well as the waterfront leases. Want to talk a little bit about how we come up with the revenues available to pay the debt service? So this is based on your 14, 15 audited numbers. Part of our delay, when we started this in the summer, is we said, your dialogue is going to be occurring right around the time the EIR is released, so why don't we wait and use actual 14, 15 numbers in our analysis? So these are based on audited numbers. The operating revenues for the funds were 11.3 million. Operating expenses were roughly 9.4. For a revenue bond, we add back in any non-cash expenses. So in the case here, there was $908,000 of depreciation. We can add that back in, because it's a non-cash item, as well as investment income, which gets us to 2.9, almost $3 million of net operating income available to pay debt service. We add back the revenues that we're going to pay the bank loan on the lease leaseback, which gets us total revenue for debt service of 4.8 million. Under this scenario, what we've determined is, under a net revenue pledge, we can afford about $61 million of bonding. We have to pay the DBA loan. We've got to pay down the waterfront lease payments. We have to have a reserve fund, pay cost of issuance. So what would be left over in that scenario would be $34 million for infrastructure projects, slightly less than the low end of the hard cost estimate. I know everybody can't see these numbers, but I'll just point out that the 4.8 million of operating income covers $3.5 million of annual debt service. So you can see, we have our debt service coverage. And after debt service, you're still leaving yourself $1.3 million a year in cushion that could either go to fund balance or be used to finance additional infrastructure improvement. And that's a critical component as we go forward looking at these other scenarios. I'm going to keep coming back and reminding you of that. Scenario two is what we call a gross revenue pledge. And in this case, what we would do is we would issue bonds equal to every dollar of net revenue that's available after expenses. And we're able to do that because the security we would provide our bondholders is a gross revenue pledge. So the first dollars coming in to that enterprise would be used to pay debt service, and after that, it'd be used to pay operating expenses. And why can we do that? Because many of the expenses are repayments to advances from the city's general fund. So the harbor's bearing the cost of some police, portion of fire, probably some street cleaning. I mean, a whole number of general fund expenditures that you're then allocating to the harbor enterprise. And because of that, if you wanted to leverage on a one-to-one basis through the harbor, we could do that with a gross revenue bond pledge. All the other structuring considerations remain the same. 30-year financing, level debt service, fully funded debt service reserve fund, 10-year ability to prepay, and additionally, prepaying the DBA loans and the waterfront leases. We highlight, again, how we get to that. So we would still be getting to the same net revenue amount, because that's the amount available to pay debt service. But the sizing of the issue would use 100% of that 4.8 million.
What's included in the operating revenues?
Excuse me?
What's included in the operating revenues? The lease rates?
Yeah, virtually every revenue source that we have within the waterfront is in our operating revenues. Probably the two single biggest components of that are lease revenues that we collect from properties and our parking revenues that we collect. But any other ancillary revenues that come in through the waterfront is all shown as the operating revenues.
Okay.
And that's why, again, the way you structured your sale leaseback with those large leaseholds, most of the income generated from that is going to pay those bank loans. So if, under this structure where we pay off those bank loans, now that income is coming to the harbor enterprise rather than just the net revenue. So here, what we've highlighted now, your bonding amount, you're able to bond approximately $82.6 million. We prepay the DBA loans, the waterfront lease, establish the debt service reserve fund. We have about $54 million available for infrastructure projects. However, we go to the next page, and you can see that we're leveraging every dollar of the net revenue for debt service on the bonds. So that $1.3 million cushion, on an annual basis, I referenced in scenario one, it's no longer on the table. You're using every dollar for debt service, and you're effectively subordinating some portion of general fund reimbursements to debt service on the bonds.
Which column is that 1.3 million shown in?
If you go back to take your net operating income of 4.8, subtract the net debt service of 3.5, and that's where I get my 1.3 million.
What's the total interest?
On the memo that was provided by KNN, if you were to look at page three of that memo, so I believe it's back one page from where you are, what you'll see in the second to last column is something that says net operating income, $4.8 million. The column before that says net debt service, 3.5 million. The difference between those two numbers is what's being represented by Mark as the available money left over after you've serviced the debt, that cushion that he's referencing. If you were to go then to the very next table on your chart, which is on page four, if you'll notice, the last two columns are virtually the same. I mean, there's some slight difference, but they're almost exactly the same number. So you're leveraging every dollar that we're taking in to gross proceeds that are available, and we're leveraging every one of those dollars, so you don't have any difference between those two.
But it assumes no growth either.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's typical for any sort of revenue bond, particularly with an enterprise that has a long history like this. We'll typically go and look at sort of the last three-year historical, make sure there haven't been a lot of ups and downs, but typically, we won't embed growth into our assumptions. So any future growth would in order to the benefit of the harbor, but we're, again, our assumptions tend to be pretty conservative. So we're just pointing out that the good news is, you can do $54 million of projects. The bad news, you have no buffer. And the city is at risk, to the extent that you don't meet those, some of the general fund expenditures you've assigned to the harbor enterprise would not be able to be Okay, scenario three, assumed lease revenue bonds. And essentially, this would be the same leveraging that you would in terms of scenario two, where you're leveraging 100 cents of the dollar. Except by doing it as a lease revenue bond, one, the city's general fund is on the hook. So the AA plus rating of the city would be the rating on the bonds compared to probably a triple B plus rating on the revenue bonds. Additionally, because it's the city general fund, we don't require a debt service reserve fund. The rating agencies are comfortable not utilizing that. So under a lease revenue bond structure, we'd get the one times coverage, we'd get a lower interest cost because of the higher credit rating. And so moving on to the, again, we'd use the same revenue stream, the 4.8 million, so we're not changing any of those assumptions. And under that scenario, our bonding amount would be 84.5 million. After paying the DBA loans, the lease prepayment, cost of issuance, we'd have almost $61 million available for projects. And jumping to the next page, you'll see it's the same leverage. It's one times coverage, but your additional leverage is one because of your lower interest cost, as well as not having to direct resources towards a debt service reserve fund. I do have to comment, though, that this structure, in a revenue bond, you're really limited by your revenue stream.
What's the interest on that one over the course of the 30 years?
This is about, would be about 50 basis points, half a percent lower than utilizing the revenue bond.
How many millions is that? $70 million?
You know, it's... Give me a second here.
If you borrow 85, get 61 and pay, and then have to give them $70 million in top of that.
Yeah, the interest rate savings is about 1.2, 1.3, but because you're leveraging the same revenue stream, you're just, you're taking a little bit more principal and paying a little bit lower interest, but overall, your gross debt service is the same, because you're leveraging that same revenue stream. A comment that I want to make on the lease revenue bond structure is, because it's a lease, we have to find assets to lease. Whereas an enterprise revenue bond, we're really looking at the revenue stream. And understand law, we can issue debt secured by special revenues. Prop 13 limits the general fund of the city to only issue lease revenue bonds, which means we have to find, in this case, over $76 million worth of assets in the city to be the subject of a lease.
Unless it goes for a vote.
That's my scenario four.
The next one.
So if you were to go and put the general fund of the city on the line without a vote of the people, the only mechanism to do that would be a lease revenue bond, and we'd have to come up with $76 million of essential assets, which obviously, there aren't anywhere near that amount of assets in the harbor. So you'd be going and looking at other assets of the city, a police station, a city hall, a library, and you'd be cobbling those together to come up with $76 million of value. I'm not prepared today to make any sort of recommendations. That wasn't my, my charge here was to lay out scenarios.
Give us the ugly facts.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to four.
But I certainly can tell you that scenario three would probably be one of the lowest on, if I were to rank them, because of the factor of this assets. Scenario four, we were asked to look at general obligation bonds. These would be issued by the city. It'd be subject to two-thirds vote or approval. Under law, the district has to be the boundaries of the city of Redondo Beach. You can't carve out a special GO bond district just relating to the harbor or affected areas. To do a general obligation bond, it has to be citywide vote. Under that, if the voters approve the ad valorem property tax levy, it would not be a general fund obligation of the city. It'd be an obligation solely repaid out of the additional property tax levy. And it would enjoy the highest credit rating that the city has, the AA plus. We'd do 30-year financing, no debt service reserve fund. We'd keep a 10-year call feature. There'd be no need to incorporate prepaying DBA loans or the waterfront leases, as the borrowing capacity is directed by the additional tax levies. So we're not even touching harbor revenues. There is, you know, obviously, election cycle issues and process that you're very familiar with. And potentially, they could be issued up to the point of having no financing gap. So next page, we basically did our scenario to assume, what would the potential ad valorem tax be to the city? We took your existing 15, 16 AV, 14.29 million as the base. And for purposes of a tax rate analysis, we've assumed no growth. If we were to, if you actually were to pursue a GO bond, we probably would embed some growth rate in order to try to minimize the effective tax rate. But for purposes of being conservative, we assumed no growth. And our first schedule was if we just financed the 37.5 million low end of infrastructure, it would result in a tax rate of $13.48 per $100,000 of AV. And the next scenario, if we assumed 108 million, that scenario would be $38.81 per 100,000 AV. And to put that in context, if you're looking at an average AV of $800,000, the annual bill would be something down the order of $340, $350. And again, that would be across citywide.
And that would be each year for a number of years, correct?
Yes. Each year for 30 years. 30 years.
Wonderful.
And again, this is one scenario. If you wanted us to do a 25-year scenario or 20-year, we obviously could do that. We figured for this scenario, let's show the lowest possible tax rate to accomplish the bookends, recognizing if you don't like 30 years, the only way we can accomplish it would be to shorten it, which obviously would raise the annual tax rate. So we provided, and we provided this in the memo as well, we just laid out, you know, each of the scenarios here, and sort of laid out, you know, certain of them require coverage. All of them, we've assumed, we use exist, some existing revenue streams, so we're not borrowing to pay interest. Three of them require an asset pledge, but the lease revenue bond is the most onerous, because we need value for the entire principal amount of bonds. All of them assumed 100% tax exempt financing. That might be aggressive as it relates to refunding the lease leasebacks, but figured for purposes of this analysis, we'd assume the most aggressive. And then we laid out for each of them, the maximum amount that could be raised, and then compared that to the financing gap of the high-end range of your bookend infrastructure
And just a couple of quick comments as it relates to this. Three points. In a way, Mark's laid out for scenarios one, two, and three, sort of the least risk, least risk to most risk profile here. Scenario one does not put the general fund at risk in any way, shape, or form. Scenario two puts the general fund at risk as it relates to our ability to pay expenditures currently borne by the enterprise. And if we had a down year in revenues, those expenditures would then fall to the general fund. Scenario three, as you heard Mark say, clearly requires not only a collateralization of our general service resources and capital assets to secure the transaction, but ultimately, it would be the general fund's obligation to pay the annual revenue debt service first and foremost, before even receiving ultimately those revenues from the harbor enterprise. The other thing to note, in the total capital ability to spend, these are aggregated revenues between the tidelands and uplands. We have, under the trust exchange requirements with the state, we can only spend tidelands' resources in the tidelands. So when you look at the sort of general profile here, approximately 60% of the revenues are tidelands-generated versus 40% upland. So of the available proceeds in the $35 million range or others, you would have to, your spending capacity would be limited to those areas on a proportionate basis. One thing to note also, our pure parking structure is technically an uplands-serving asset at this point. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't petition the state lands commission to reconsider how we classify that facility, but right now, it's considered an uplands facility. So we can't use tidelands' resources to currently pay for that level of capital repair. Obviously, scenario four is its own thing. That provides no general fund risk, which would be, from a city management perspective, something we would recommend before scenarios two and three. But candidly, it would be difficult for us to see, given the level of risk associated with both scenarios two and three, the fact also, I should add, that the 14, 15 fiscal year was probably the tidelands and uplands' highest performing year in, frankly, decades. We had a very good year last year. We would be a little concerned about going with a full gross revenue pledge or a, certainly a general fund lease leaseback. So there is some conservative monies buried in scenario one that we would feel somewhat comfortable with, but scenarios two and three would require additional vetting and would be of some concern before we would ever, I think, advise you to take on such debt service.
I was going to say, and to comment again, my charge was to look at maximizing the ability of the existing resources to generate dollars for infrastructure. In no way was I asked, sitting here today, to give a recommendation of one scenario versus the other. I, if I were asked, would I think it prudent to do scenario two at one times coverage? Probably not. And it probably would warrant spending time with staff to get a better sense as to the fluctuation of revenues, a better sense as to what those general fund expenditures being charged were. And there probably would be a recommended coverage factor, not as high as 135, but not as low as one times. But again, that was not my charge to come to you with a recommendation. It was to give you sort of the absolute maximums, I believed, given structures that I know are marketable, ratable, and sellable in our market.
Thank you. The money's fine, the debt service is horrible. It's, they're all equally horrifying. You know, Bill asked you a question earlier, it was a simple question, and it's, and it's, nobody's at fault, but nobody in the room knows what that money from 20 years ago went to. We could probably find it tomorrow, but right now, you know, I just said, when you said, "I don't know," I had this vision of 20 years or 25 years, someone up here asking the same question to the next staff and a whole new group of citizens, and that staff going, "I don't know. We don't know where it went." And then all we're doing is passing it down the road. And this is something that the interest, what, I couldn't keep track of it all. $52 million in interest in one of them, you're using percentage points, but, you know, one of them was, again, I wrote it down quickly, you borrow 85 to get 61, and it costs you $100,000, $100 billion or something. So the, and that could be bad numbers, I was scribbling fast, but it seems like if we did something like, if we were dumb enough to do something like this, that we're just turning our city into one of these cities you're reading about in the papers all the time, 20 years from now. There's a potential of bankrupting our future council and citizens. And I don't see a bond passing, because again, the only people that, the people that are less likely to vote for a bond are the people that would pay the least also, because, you know, I'm a senior, we're not going to pay for the bond. But we're also the beneficiaries of Prop 13. So young people are still buy their house now, and they're paying a million and a half dollars for a tear down, and then they build their dream house, and they're going to pay $1,500 a year on top of their $20,000 a year property tax. So, you know, the Prop 13 doesn't really, you know, it wouldn't be equitable in this at all, but I wouldn't support the property tax. But you wouldn't get two-thirds of the voters to do that in this city anyway. They wouldn't vote, they won't vote two-thirds in favor of a sunny day, much less taxing themselves. But, you know, I just, it's just kind of freaky to think that we could go out and borrow the money, and then in 20 years, no one knows where it went, and they got to get another $100 million for another infrastructure bond or whatever. So, you know, I appreciate this receive and file, but, you know, I don't think it's going to go anywhere, and this receive and file will show us the horror of what the situation would be if we had to get the money.
We do have some additional information to share about the enhanced infrastructure financing district.
That's the next item, or?
No, that's continuation of this item.
You can share it all you want, but this is still horrifying, you know?
Well, just as a wrap-up on this particular agenda item, you know, as we've presented these scenarios, and Mark has presented them, these are all scenarios that are based on revenues that are being generated by the enterprise fund, and we laid out the risk assumptions associated with that. If we look at the project as a new development opportunity and opportunities to create some kind of financing mechanisms that relate to new development, and I realize this is a little bit of a transition from how do we finance with what we currently have today to new development occurring within the waterfront, and then what tools are available to us when new development does occur in the waterfront. One of the things that the council had asked about was if we could do a little bit of exploration into the concept of an enhanced infrastructure financing district. This is a district that can be created, that can be used for the financing and construction or rehabilitation of a whole host of public infrastructure facilities. Basically, it's done with the use of property tax increment from various taxing agencies. So a concept that you're relatively familiar with in terms of tax increment financing, this is the same tool that's used in an enhanced infrastructure financing district. So the district gets established, the tax increment gets, the base gets set, increment grows, and then that additional tax increment is available to service some of the new improvements that may be a part of that district itself. Things that we could fund would be things like highways, streets, parking and transit facilities, which I know are important to us. We could use it for stormwater systems, parks, rec facilities, really a whole host of various types of infrastructure components, sustainable design features. There's a wide range of opportunities for us to use that. To establish an enhanced infrastructure financing district, we have to go through a protocol. That protocol requires defining some boundaries for the project area, establishing those boundaries, adoption of a resolution by the council to establish that district itself, have a financing, public financing authority that would have responsibility for it, and then actually preparing and approving an infrastructure financing plan for the district. So it's a very formal process that we would go through. We have done some initial conversations, and Larry Cosmon of Cosmon Associates is here, he could tackle any detailed questions you may want to ask. We do think it could be a viable tool for the waterfront. We do think it could be a viable tool for the waterfront or other areas of the city that might expend, experience some growth. And what we would do is we would suggest that as we dig deeper into the financial components of the waterfront project, that we look at this as a possible tool in our toolbox and see what kinds of opportunities that might present ourselves from a public financing option in terms of being able to finance some of these improvements that would be necessary. So I recognize that's an abbreviated overview of what an infrastructure financing district can be and what it can do, but I think the fundamental difference between that and some of the presentations we've made here is it's, it is dependent upon new development and growth within the district in which it's established. And so I think that's kind of a, a real simple overview, and I know Larry would be happy to tackle any questions that you might have in terms of that tool and its applicability to the waterfront itself.
I'm gonna burden you with some more work, though, before I give the Florida bill. What was that, the bond that you would want to pay off? What was the original amount of that, that bond 20 years ago that we still owe on?
The D-Ball loan?
Yeah.
It was...
I think originally it was about $4 million between the two.
Oh, the original value.
Originally, and what's, what do we owe on it?
Originally, it was about $4, $4 million, and I believe now you, it's like $2, $2.1 million.
After 20 years? Okay. I'd like to find out referral to staff right now, what that went to.
Sure.
Somebody has a record of it somewhere. It doesn't have to be, it could be for a council meeting, just to let us see what, where they spent the money on. You know, there's always a lot of former elected officials that like to talk about current elected officials. I'll see what they, how they wasted their money too, you know, so stop bitching at us all the time. But, you know, a lot of these, the scenarios are just horrifying for our children, I think. But it's, I know it's a tool in the toolbox. But, okay, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Mayor Aspel. And actually, I think all these mechanisms at least illustrate what, what we have at our, at our, as options on how to move forward. And the EIFD is exactly something that, that, you know, you weren't able to cover. Can you go back to one of your original slides, though, that shows the infrastructure costs that we've been talking about for about, I don't know, however long, six months or so? Yeah, right there. So we come up to this total of 37 to 108, based on, I guess, a variety of factors that we use, how much money we would spend on each one. And some of this, we are, in the MOU anyway, with CenterCal, we're obligated for the seaside lagoon and the boat launch, both of which we'll be looking to get grants from a variety of state agencies. So we could reduce the value potentially there as well as deciding also on how much we would, we would perform there. Likewise, there's several, several areas where grants from different agencies, government agencies, like we do with the Bike Path, the MTA, things like that, any kind of transportation-related infrastructure, could certainly be looking to MTA and other, other grant options that we've gotten from other projects. I mean, I think the Bike Path ended up being, what, $5 million? And I think Redondo spent about $1 million on it. So we got $4 million from other grants for that particular transportation upgrade. Anyway, I wanted to ask you, Larry, about EIFD. I guess the process is we have to mark out an area and then we have to identify infrastructure upgrades that we'd want to do in that area, and then we'd have to have an agency, and then we would move towards trying to capture more of the property tax increment.
Yes.
Just so people know, we don't get 100% of what we pay in property taxes. Redondo Beach gets about 17% of whatever we pay in property taxes, and the rest goes to the county and the state. So this is a way to capture more of what goes to the county, I take it?
Yes, so one, one of the premises of these EIFDs and this new wave of economic development, it's about sustainability and infrastructure. And the governor and the legislature were trying, have been trying to push counties and cities to work together. So unlike redevelopment where you could just essentially sequester another agency's tax increment for your own use for a period of time, in order to have access to, let's say, the county as a participant, they have to affirmatively approve the boundaries of the district, the infrastructure financing plan, and they have to authorize the use of their tax increment. So you could use more than your own 17 cents, subject to getting the approval for participation by another taxing agency, in this case, most likely the county, if they saw it as a regional benefit and if they agreed to it. So that, that is a possibility. That's one dimension of EIFDs that's somewhat unique and new as a special district. We haven't really seen these before in California.
Right, right. So what I hear a, a lot in the public saying is, is, you know, how, how do we fund this on our own, which is why we did this in the first place? And could you see a combination of an EIFD and some sort of revenue bond, lease revenue bond or general obligation, a combination of what we see here and an EIFD?
Yeah, in fact, the way we're, we're looking at about four or five of these in other locations, we're actually looking at lease, leasebacks or see, you know, community facilities districts or other front-end financing mechanisms, one that take existing revenues to seed, in other words, to sort of provide the initial cash flow for the EIFD until the tax increment comes on. The thing about a tax increment district is it takes a while to build value. You have to bring on new projects, that increases the table for assessed value, and it's that tax increment that becomes available to the district for ongoing projects or future projects. So we're using a combination of these tools on the front end to get the revenue, some revenues to the EIFD early and then could be taken out by future tax revenue or used for other projects, depending on how much there is.
Right. So a combination of those, of that combination, as well as getting grants and stuff, we can really start to whittle away at what not only we're spending money on and how much we're spending it, but how we're also financing it. So I see all these scenarios as like, you know, just silos, oh, we can do this, and we don't think of anything else. I mean, it's, it's an amalgam of all these different things if we really think hard about it and want to do something. So I'm, I'm nowhere near as negative as the mayor here.
Oh, we have to whittle away, you're right.
I think it's something we have to look at, especially since we may have no choice when we want to update, upgrade our harbor and upgrade our infrastructure, which everybody wants to do. And by the way, the reason we're in this mess is because previous councils and previous mayors did not set aside money to keep our harbor up. And so we're stuck.
And we can't change the wrongs of that.
And so, you know, whatever future generations feel they're being cheated out of, I mean, you know, we're all sharing in the pain, depending on how this, how this works out. So, yeah, and going forward, I might, we're gonna talk about the parking structure, I mean, we've been talking about that for like four or five years, a study from three years ago, and we still haven't started setting money aside to redo the parking structure. So Mike, you want to?
Right. I just wanted to add that, per your point, the, the next phase in, in Mark's analysis is going to be just that, sort of the, the hybrid of, of existing revenues with potential new tax increment and how we could utilize the two perhaps to, to further close this gap. That is coming. That's the next phase of this work.
I don't want the public to feel like we're, we're boxed into a corner that we, you know, public-private partnerships come in many sizes and many shapes. So one of the elements of this type of mix of different ways is to have a, a private partner, obviously. Doesn't necessarily mean the private partner has to be taking on everything that CenterCal's signing up for, right? You could have a, a, a mix of all these things with a, with a private partner that gets us where we want to go. So we, we shouldn't feel like we're pigeonholed into like, doing a big project that CenterCal's proposing, or we don't have the money to fix it and so we just sit around and wait for it to, to fall into the sea. That's not, that's not the dichotomy we're in, okay? If that's the right word, anyway.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
But it's great information, I guess it's a receive and file, and I, I think to be continued, frankly.
Oh, we'll be back, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? And we have some written requests?
You don't need to fill any.
God, if you want to come down to the microphone, you're welcome to.
Good.
Because we're not that busy. Sheila Lamb. Mary Yule. Anybody else is welcome to come down.
Mary Yule, 40-year resident plus of Redondo Beach. And you all look so very tired. I think it's terrible to have finances at this time of night. Especially when they're so promising. I am a senior citizen. I do not look at this as negatively as Mayor Aspel. I am delighted that you are presenting other options. For this reason, just as Bill Brandis said, the bill for the Last Supper is due in regards to the infrastructure repairs that did not get addressed in the past. And if those had been addressed, we would not be in the position we are with CenterCal. And even now, as a senior citizen with Prop 13, I would gladly, and many others would also, to pay for a bond measure that would take care of the infrastructure repairs so that we don't have to have such a overdevelopment, such a gigantic and dense overtaking of our harbor. So I disagree with you, Mayor Aspel. I go to meetings, there are a lot of people with gray hair who are just so ready to do a bond measure rather than have CenterCal's take over. Sheila Lamb spoke to how the waterfront is about people and relationships. The relationship I'm even more aware of is the need of people who are drawn to the ocean to be renewed in mind and spirit. They come hurting from physical ills or loss, and the ocean has to be accessible when you are feeling weak or desolate. They are seeking a relationship with nature and the ocean. They do not come to be hit with cement walls, which is equivalent to a stopper message. 80% of the view is lost with CenterCal's model of a lifestyle destination. This points to the need to update the master plan, which went south when Measure G, so poorly written and understood or would not have passed, took place. This is the overriding, this revision of the master plan is the overriding need that CenterCal has literally put in our face. Secondly, which I just said, we were set up by the city administrations of the past and two of them sitting in front of us from the past also, by the failure to plan for and implement ongoing repairs. Two, the underground parking structure. And now the idea of underground parking sounds so sweet in comparison to two and three-story parking structures.
You have to wrap it up pretty quick, Mary.
Okay. I'm getting to the point that Bill, Bill, Fred Bruning is not the choice of the people. He doesn't understand our community, he doesn't read the commitment we have to ecology, and I am hoping that our ties with him, the memorandum of understanding, will not be extended.
That's the next subject. Your, your time is, you can talk about that the next time.
Oh, I'm in the wrong place?
We're on the next, you can talk about that coming up.
Okay.
Your three minutes are up, so.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, we might get stuck doing this, it's still horrifying. I don't like the idea of having to get all this, all this money in the bonds. Okay, who else wants to speak?
Greg Didi, property owner in Redondo Beach for, since '77. Loved the city, loved the location. I loved the Horseshoe Pier with all those distant memories of Castignola's and those good times at the Blue Moon Saloon. It was really terrific. And back then, in the, in, in the seventies and in the eighties, we were paying $300,000 to $400,000 a year to maintain the Horseshoe Pier. I was horrified. I, I actually did sit on a harbor commission for a little bit, you know, and then I was pretty persona non grata, but I couldn't understand why we spent that much money down there, you know? And I was informed that the revenues more than deal with it. I mean, we're making lots of money down there. And then it got really difficult to follow the money trail in Redondo Beach because I think under, oh, that wouldn't be fair, someone in the past, right? If, I don't know, Richard Parsons or Sheila Shockner or whatever, and managers, city managers, we kind of lumped all of this financing and money into a pool that was virtually impossible to figure out where the hell the money was going. Now, there was a grand concept, this is going somewhere, Mayor Aspel, that's right, was Chuck Johnson and his large hotel, which before it became Crown Plaza was the Sheridan, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know, Sheridan. And I thought to make that fly, the city, and I don't know if this has to go with the magic money and the bonds, but the city came up with about $7 million bucks to help finance and make that fly, the, the hotel, and I guess it's 150 rooms, something like that. And then, of course, it was a number of years, a few years later, it went into bankruptcy. And I, I've heard recent numbers that they were able to buy it for 40 cents on the dollar, and so it's a profitable operation now. But I, I hate to use these words, but I'm gonna use them. I think that past activity, if they're around, that it's criminal that we did not maintain that, that pier, the south pier. And I didn't realize that it, you know, at the time, I moved in the city in '77, I had no idea in '73 it was constructed or completed. And then we did the Safran Development Company operation, and that was supposedly going to garner revenue. Well, what it did, it's, well, this goes into N3, so I'll, I'll wait for Walker. Thank you for the time and opportunity. I don't know if you're gonna look at that money for the Sheridan Hotel, if the city, if that's paid off. It hasn't been that many years, has it been there, 15 years? Anyway, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Come on down.
Hey, Mayor, Council. My name is Martin Holmes from District 1. This is really interesting. I'm like a kid in a candy shop with this stuff. So scenario one, I do not like. It's not enough money. Scenario three, I think, is you're really kind of selling the house for a very small amount of additional money, so I don't like that one. You're only gaining an extra $7 million. So I focus in on scenario two, and I think there's really a lot of opportunity there. And like you said, you may want to tweak the name, numbers, instead of 1.0, maybe there's something between 1.0 and 1.35. I'm not sure where the 1.35 comes from, so, you know, that's just something of my own curiosity that I'd be interested in hearing about. I think the $54 million that you get from that, though, is pretty substantial, and you could combine that in creative ways along with the CenterCal development to reduce the burden of size on that CenterCal development. Right now, if we ask CenterCal to pay somewhere between 37 and 108, we're saying, hey, CenterCal, pay our bill. And CenterCal is saying, yes, we'll pay your bill, but we need a really big development to do it. If we partner with that and come up with some creative options and get some grants, you could really reduce the size to something more manageable with less of an impact on the city. Let me also just scatter through these notes I was taking. I don't know where the range of 37 to 108 comes from, that is a gigantic range, gigantic. Someone should really look into that number and try to hone it in and really study it and narrow it down some more because that's, you know, a factor of three. I don't know how you can plan and budget on something that could be off by a factor of three. What else? So I think scenario two is worth extra investigation. I think creative options, further studying that, it, it could really lay the groundwork for a compromise that could work. So I think that's about all I had to say on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, staff, Nils Narenheim, live in Redondo Beach. Thank you very much for this wonderful slide. This slide really puts into perspective what you very much for this wonderful slide. This slide really puts into perspective what us, the citizens of the South Bay as a whole, are going to be dealing with and looking at right here. And I'm looking at this, and I find this slide, actually, it really puts everything into perspective, this entire project. I look at the boat lawn tramp, which can be paid for by a grant. I look at the seaside lagoon, which can be paid for by a grant. Basin Three docks and slips, I'm sure there's a grant for that. There's a lot of money out there that's going to pay for exactly all of this stuff through grants. So, really, exactly what we're talking about right now is line item number one, parking structure, sixteen to fifty-four million dollars. And I just want to reiterate that, a parking structure for sixteen to fifty-four million dollars in the harbor, we're going to build a massive four-hundred-million-dollar project to pay for a parking structure. I just, I cannot reiterate that fact enough. I'm sorry, but it's just, you know what? I'm not sorry. I'm dead serious. That parking structure has been a nail, a thorn in our side, and we need to deal with it properly and move on. We don't want a four-story massive parking structure that kills our views to pay for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good. You're done? Okay. There's no lights on, so.
Motion received and filed.
There's a second, third, fourth, we're all good. You guys in? Okay. Can't nod, I can't see. Okay, good. All right, thank you. It is still just like amazing, the cost of money for, it's just amazing, so.
As the mayor said, we have no choice.
Well, I understand that, but it's a tool, you know, toolbox. Thanks for your report, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. The next up is discussion of the waterfront parking structure analysis prepared by Walker Restoration Consultants.
Just that one slide. So, the second item here tonight is another receive and file. I'm going to, since this slide does point some things out, we're going to leave this one up just to have this conversation because this is the range that we presented as staff back in July in terms of the estimated costs. I think it's important to reiterate again, these are hard costs. They don't include any design contingencies, any of those kinds of costs, which could raise these costs anywhere between thirty and forty percent. But all of that being said, you know, when you look at the differential between the two numbers, the thirty-seven and a half million and the hundred and eight, the reason that that gap is so big is largely because of that first line item, the parking structure item. And so as a result of that, we recommended to the council back in July that we actually hire Walker Restoration Consultants to look at the costs associated with the parking structures. There's about thirteen hundred and fifty parking spaces within our parking structures. That includes both the pier structure as well as the plaza parking structure. And Walker has gone out and done that work. Their work is largely an update of work that was done in a report that they did in 2012. So in 2012, we commissioned a very expansive review of the parking structures. We looked at some structural assessment as well as the general maintenance that would be necessary for those facilities. Just to remind folks that the findings at that time found that the north pier structure was really rated to be in poor condition at the time, that the south part of the pier structure was in fair condition, and the plaza structure was thought to be in good condition at the time. At that point, there was a recommendation that we embark on a fifteen-year robust maintenance program in order to maintain the useful life of those facilities. So Walker went out, largely leaning on the work that they had previously done, and did another field assessment of the parking structures. We were out there in October, I believe it was, walking all of the structures, looking at some of the conditions, how things had changed from the work that was done in 2012. You see a lot of the photo documentation of that walkthrough in your report that's attached to the staff report. And what we found is that, no surprise, the parking structures have continued to deteriorate. And, you know, Walker's estimation is that there's been a ten percent increase in the deterioration of the facilities that has been observed in that three-year period from 2012 to 2015. In addition to that, what we've seen, no surprise, is the economy has recovered. We've seen increases in costs associated with doing work, and Walker is estimating that those repair costs have now increased by about fifteen percent since 2012. So, the long and short of it is, is when you look at the refresh that was done this year, the 2015 Walker report, they came up with three different scenarios that they looked at. The first was a very short-term scenario, about a three-year program that would really largely maintain the facilities as is, go out, maybe take off some of the loose concrete, make sure they're safe, but not do any real major improvements in terms of maintenance or structural improvements to the facilities. They estimated that work at about five hundred thousand dollars for that three-year period. We looked at a longer term, which was about a ten-to-twelve-year window of work in terms of keeping the garages up and operational for a ten-to-twelve-year period. And the work that would be associated with that jumps dramatically. It jumps all the way up to eighteen point three million dollars in order to maintain those facilities for about another ten-to-twelve years of useful life. One of the pieces that was missing when we did this analysis back in July was a really good estimate in terms of what the replacement cost would be for the pier parking structure. I'll be honest and say that, you know, there was a bit of a guesstimate in terms of that fifty-four million dollars based on some, just, you know, previous experience I've had in doing some parking garage facilities. Walker went out, they did a planning level assessment in terms of what they thought a replacement structure would be, and their number came in at forty-nine point six million dollars. So, pretty close to the high end of what we're estimating on this range that you have in front of you. So, what we wanted to do was really bring this information to light. We think this is an instructional piece of information in terms of how the structures have been performing over the past three years, how the costs have changed over the past three years, and then start to highlight what this means for us on a go-forward basis. What we're recommending is that we look at this program and start to think about our next funding cycle and how we take this information and incorporate that into the funding cycle that's coming up. We think it's probably something more robust than the three-year program, but perhaps it's not quite robust as the ten-to-twelve-year program right now. We need to sit down with Walker and work through what we think the proper level of improvements will be. I think having a good understanding of what the ultimate decision is relative to the waterfront project will also factor into that decision that needs to be made in terms of the level of improvement or replacement for the parking facilities. So we're presenting this information tonight for you as a receive and file. You know, we will, we would note that, you know, some of the complications in terms of timing are relative to some of the leaseholders that are in the garage, so we have to factor that into the consideration. But for tonight, what we're really trying to do is just bring to light some of the costs that are associated with it and show what the replacement parking structure would be. We do have representatives from Walker who have stuck it out with us tonight. Happy to answer any questions you might have about some of their field work, what they've observed in terms of the quality and the construction of the garage, the state of repair that it's in. So, happy to bring them up if necessary to tackle any technical questions you might have.
Where are they?
Dan?
Come on up and tell us what you think. Here's a bird's eye view of our parking structure.
Good evening. Dan Johns, Cameron Nemetti from Walker Restoration. Well, the garages obviously are in pretty bad shape, the north and south pier garage. Concrete is falling, as you've noticed. It's in, it's in a marine environment that only exacerbates the timing of it. And Cameron, you can talk a little bit more about that.
Yes, the report that was done in 2012 indicated some, in some places, there's deterioration in concrete, spalling, reinforcement being, corrosion accelerating in reinforcement. Since three years ago, that has gone worse, and that's the reason for the big jump in price. However, that can be scaled down if you have a very rigorous and aggressive maintenance program. So the cost will go to maintenance. But we have put in some measures such as cathodic protection, which would reverse the corrosion, stop the corrosion. But we can take it out, but you have to have a very aggressive maintenance program so that it doesn't get any worse.
Okay.
And that would take you another ten to fifteen years. If what is implemented, report is done, you probably can think about twenty-five years.
And what's that, what would the range of cost be for twenty-five years?
Eighteen million dollars. Then the maintenance is not as aggressive, and we use, what we use in offshore structures, basically, to reverse the corrosion and stop the corrosion. Because that's your biggest enemy here, your marine environment.
Right.
And you have airborne chloride coming right to the concrete. As we speak right now, there are many rebars that are exposed, and that's where you see the spalling, and so.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Aspel. Seems like the real parking structure that's, the challenge is the south pier parking structure. I mean, looking at the numbers, it's fifteen million dollars as to, for a ten-to-fifteen-year repair protocol, where the other two, you know, one's only eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, and then the north pier parking structure is two point four million. So, you're recommending, if we did an aggressive, an aggressive repair and ongoing maintenance plan on, well, I guess on all three, how much would that cost? Is this, is this your aggressive plan here?
Yeah, this is the one that doesn't require that aggressive maintenance that you, I would call it, for eighteen million. But you can scale it down to probably half of that or less, but then you have to have a program in place. So anytime there's a crack, you seal the crack, you monitor it on a regular basis, and that would slow down the deterioration process.
Well, that was actually recommended three years ago, if I recall.
The more you wait, these numbers will go higher. It's like cancer. You can't wait. It's growing.
Construction costs have really loomed up, too.
And once the rebar starts corroding, it gets into a structure and gets worse and worse, just as I said, like cancer.
So these, these costs are, I'm a little confused. These costs are to fix it, and you're talking about you can, you can reduce these by engaging in an aggressive maintenance plan?
Well, what we're trying to say is, we've got cathodic protection in there right now for the aggressive one. We could potentially scale that back.
Passive galvanic system, you can scale that back quite a bit.
Why wouldn't you?
Why wouldn't?
I'm missing something here. It sounds like, hey, you can spend a lot of money and do the same thing, or you can spend less money and do the same thing.
Because you're not stopping the corrosion. It's really fired up right now.
That slows down the corrosion. It's like killing the cancer.
You can't see the corrosion either.
The more aggressive one?
Yeah.
The more expensive one?
Yes.
That's right.
You go to the source of the problem. Your problem is corrosion.
So what is this, let's just zero in on the ten-to-fifteen-year one. Which program is that, that you've got a total of eighteen million dollars?
That's the cathodic protection.
That's the more aggressive one?
Yes.
Right.
That's stopping the corrosion from happening. The other one doesn't stop it, but you have proactive approach.
So instead of ten-to-fifteen years, you're looking at five-to-ten years?
So basically, what you do, instead of, you try to sandblast the corrosion out, clean it out, paint the rebar, or replace it with a new bar, overlapping it. Put a better concrete on top so you have the surface all covered. And then you look for cracks because corrosion's not going to be stopped.
But then your maintenance program has to be much more beefed up.
Okay.
What I think it is, originally, the concrete that was designed, the mixed design, was not appropriate for this environment. So maybe it's good for five miles down the coast, I mean, away from the coast in the east, but this is almost a marine structure. It's right on the water. So it has to be much less permeable concrete, and it's not.
But we can maintain it. I mean, it's not, we can, it's going to be expensive, but we can maintain it.
And that's, that's, sorry for the interruption, but that is, that is one of the next steps for us, is to sit down with Walker and start to actually create a strategy for the maintenance program that starts to look at what kinds of things do we want to try to implement, whether it's the cathodic protection programs or whether it's, you know, some other maintenance program. But, but it's to start to prioritize the list of improvements that are going to be necessary and work through, take that all the way through plans and specs, and start to implement that maintenance program as part of our upcoming budget cycle.
Right. Well, it's good to hear you say that, Stephen, because I mean, it's what I thought was happening three years ago. And then here we are, and three years goes by fast.
And three years from now, if you don't do anything, you're going to have much bigger numbers. It's going to spread throughout much faster.
Okay, thank you.
Christian?
So hypothetically, we go with a ten-to-fifteen-year plan, say, right? And then, at, at the end of that, then what? Is it, we have to replace it? Has it then pretty much gone as far as it can go?
Go back to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Well, concrete is a very forgiving material, so it may go on for another twenty-five years. We don't know. The fact is that you have corrosion inside your concrete. So how they show, how it manifests itself, we don't know. You have to make measurements of the cover of concrete, over reinforcement. These are the things that accelerate the progress. So, just looking at what we have now, to take care of the one that has manifested themselves on the surface, that's what it is. You can have a lot more cases of corrosion inside that hasn't come to the surface yet. We don't know because it is connected, the rebar, and the corrosion can accelerate the inside, especially if you get cracks. If you don't paint it, you find the chloride find a way to get in. It's not through the moisture, it's through the mist, through the fog, anything that can transport chlorides into the concrete can be very aggressive.
Right. So there's a lot of what-ifs. So, and this, this concrete, apparently, again, we're paying for the sins of our fathers here, not, should not have been used. It's, as you said, I think it's really permeable. So the moisture just gets, everything, right? So, and is there any way to coat that outside to protect against that, or is that pretty much just a temporary?
Yeah, there's coating out there right now. And part of the plan is to replace the coating, to protect the water from getting intruding. Is that part of the plan?
But it doesn't take away the fact that you have a more permeable concrete that is required for this environment. So even the coating can crack through temperature variations, expansion of the concrete. So then you get another alley for...
Yeah, and it's, it's also possible, too, that after that ten-to-fifteen years, once you've put the eighteen million in, you're going to maybe have to do another major twenty million dollar upgrade.
Right. Okay. And so, again, hypothetically, you know, we spend the money, we do a ten-to-fifteen year repair. Does that come with a guarantee that no concrete's going to fall on somebody's head, or, you know, like?
No.
Never.
No guarantees.
So, we're just kind of shoring up something that we're not quite certain about. Okay.
But if you have an aggressive maintenance program, the probability of...
The probability becomes less and less.
Much, much less.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
And just one thing to note as well, these, these improvements do not address operational concerns either. This is purely a maintenance and concrete structural issue. And perhaps, and there might be some comment on the seismic, seismic improvements that you're proposing in the, in the eighteen million dollar option. How extensive are those, and what would we expect from a before-and-after standpoint?
Yeah, that, that north pier does need seismic upgrade. Part of the program. So adding sheer walls, adding some columns, footings underneath those, that's part of the upgrade.
And technology has changed. Now we have quake wrap. This is material that you can wrap around columns to give it confinement, so in case of earthquake, don't get catastrophic failure, for example.
Yeah. Now, when you guys say north pier and south pier, are we talking about the structure, the two different structures, or are we actually kind of bifurcating the pier plaza structure?
It's the pier plaza structure we're really talking about. It's, it's a combination of two structures.
There's an imaginary line.
There's an imaginary line.
Okay.
And we kind of, it's a real line. But, but yeah, we're really dividing that one structure into two pieces, a north and a south. The other one was the plaza parking structure.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Steve?
So, hey, listen, thanks you, thank you very much. This is really eye-opening. So, question, sorry to belabor this concrete thing, but you guys are the experts. And what I heard you say was, this concrete is not appropriate for this environment, which is really amazing.
It's not concrete that we would normally put in today for this environment. It was concrete they put in back in the early seventies.
So my question is...
They didn't have the technology back then.
So my question is, with your professional expertise, this non-permeable concrete, what is the lifespan?
As long as you can take, keep the water, moisture away from rebar, lifespan is forever.
Okay, so we're not keeping the water away?
No.
And so what is the average lifespan?
Look at the Colosseum in Rome. It's made of concrete. It's made of many millenniums.
So what's the average lifespan of this non-permeable concrete on an ocean?
It's no limit, as long as it's maintained.
Ten years, five years? No, what would you say, if you were building this today, you're building us a brand-new parking structure today with this non-permeable concrete, how long would you say that lifespan is?
I would say if you use the proper...
No, 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 I'm saying improper. I want the improper concrete, what we have. If you were building me a non- If you were building me a non-permeable concrete structure today, here on the ocean, how long would you guarantee it for?
You mean permeable.
Ten years?
You mean permeable.
No, 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 not, I want...
Permeable, you mean good concrete.
No, I want the bad one.
Oh, he wants the bad one.
I wanna know how long the lifespan of this bad perme, whatever, impermeable...
If you don't touch it, if you don't maintain it at all?
Yeah.
It'll start crumbling within probably five years.
Five to ten years.
And, and our, and ours was built back in the nineteen, ours was built fifty years ago.
Yeah.
Wow. Wow. Well...
My guess is they probably use the same...
We've got a lot of lawyers on staff, right?
They use the same mix design as they would use it onshore. And this is a marine structure. You use different concrete for offshore platform, for example.
I'm not attacking you guys, I'm, I'm really glad you're here, because this is what everyone needs to hear. This thing is, you're telling me this thing is forty-five years overdue?
It is.
Wow. Okay.
Well, I don't think you've not ever touched it. I mean, there's been some...
It's been maintained, they, they painted, they...
But we also got people falling through it, too, like twenty years ago. So, you know. Wow. Thank you, thank you very much, that's all I need to say.
Has, has technology improved that much in the last thirty years with concrete?
The last ten years.
Ten years.
Yes, by using admixtures such as secofume, fly ash, these microcellicles that convert calcium hydroxide to calcium silicate.
So what they used back then might have been state-of-the-art for those days, or may or may not have been, they might have been trying to get by in the cheap corners. Okay. So it was a number of years ago, we were talking about parking down there, and I remember we, we were talking about putting meters in every slot, but it, it, the, the structure wouldn't support the drill. I mean, putting in meters in every spot, would it? That was what I was told back then? Okay, but you weren't, you're not familiar with that question anyway, but, yeah, that's, but it's, it's amazing that technology's got so much better. I'm, I'm sure in thirty more years it'll be different.
Concrete technology has changed in the last five years dramatically.
Okay, okay. Billy, you wanna talk again?
Yeah, quick question, and what I thought Steve was gonna ask is, if you built a new parking structure today with the impermeable concrete and all the newest materials...
Marine structure, you call it marine structure.
Yeah, marine structure, okay. And then whatever type of concrete, state-of-the-art, and you maintained it properly, how long would that last?
Forever.
Forever, thank you. Thank you.
That's a hell of a statement, forever. Forever with us, the youngest person in the room, or...
It doesn't surprise me, I've heard that, they've got the new material if you maintain it properly, it's not gonna be corroding.
They also have the same steel rebars that never corrode, I mean...
That's good to know.
You wanna, you wanna get a Cadillac, we can give you a Cadillac.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we, if we had to do that, we don't wanna think that we'd be doing, looking at this ten years from now.
You gotta pay for the, it's worth the investment if you had to do that. Thank you, Laura. Laura?
So just to summarize, what we're saying is that it's eighteen million for the next ten to fifteen years, with a possibility of another twenty million at the end of that lifespan, or you put in fifty million to build a brand-new one, and it lasts forever. Right? Okay, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, just so we can really summarize that up.
Everything has a life expectancy, say, a hundred years.
Oh, yeah, right, so, okay, a hundred years.
Every bridge you look at, I mean, the best bridges.
Right.
They put a lifespan of, expectancy of a hundred years, yes.
Okay.
You may get an earthquake and change the equation, but...
That's true.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Anybody in the public wanna chime in on this one? Okay, thanks, guys. Go far, maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have them every meeting.
Can I speak on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, cool.
Greg, I think Greg came down again.
Okay, Martin Holmes from Redondo Beach. I thought that was a very interesting presentation. Basically, what I took away from it is that there are options. It's not the sky is falling. You took, look at that one oh eight million, right? If you subtract the eleven million dollar boat, boat launch ramp, the twelve million dollar seaside lagoon, and if we go with eighteen million for the parking structure versus fifty-four, you subtract that all out, and that puts you at forty-nine million. Forty-nine million is manageable. Forty-nine million is, what is it? It's twelve million less than option two. So if we took option two from the previous finance presentation, you'd have twelve million dollars left of margin, and you could still do everything there, and have the parking structure maintained for another fifteen years. So the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, Centracal is not our only option. If we wanna go down that path, we can, but, you know, we have options, and that's not the only thing. We're not forced to take that path.
We know that, thank you. Greg?
This is only one, yeah. The last name's impossible, D.D., Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, the mayor was sick about the cost of money, you know, I'm sick about the cost of money, although it's as cheap as it's ever been.
Right.
It's unbelievably cheap, you know, we were in business and we were stuck with paying fifteen and sixteen percent interest on, on property loans, and, and made it fly. The, as I voiced my disgust, and it's, it's water over the dam, but it virtually is criminal. I'm involved with the village. That was built in seventy-two, and it had the same concrete, maybe cheaper, because I was told by staff that it was a HUD project, you know, and so maybe it was cheaper, or whatever. They did use cheap copper, and, and I'll say that. And we've maintained the parking structures and the parking decks by maintaining them. We put the special high-tech, the latest urethane coatings just to, and took care of the rebar, and it's intact. I live at a Cote d'Azur Villa, it's built in nineteen sixty-two. They had incredible engineering and structural work then. I know technology advances, they done wonderful things with skis, so I suspect the concrete's done the same thing. But we couldn't afford to do things like the city can afford to do, because we just don't have the funding available as a private sector. So the government can kinda screw up, and screw up, and screw up, and the private sector is gonna get stuck with the bill. And, and I've had it, I'm, I'm sick and tired of it, thank you. But where else are you gonna go? This is the best country in the world.
You can't run your private life like you do a government, oh, no. This thing here is, it's informative, I think it doesn't matter, this, the cost and the bonds, everything, doesn't matter, you got a Centracal or a, a city, it's just a matter of talking about what, this is a tool, a toolbox about, about the parking structure and the other things in the harbor, and the cost of doing it. So it's just the fact that, you know, I go back on my, the, the property tax, one would be difficult to pass, because it does penalize young people, who actually paid a lot more for their house, because they bought, bought them later. I never wanna see us keep passing on our, on our errors, onto our kids and the younger people that are coming up and paying a lot for a house. Go ahead, Nils.
I agree with you, Mayor, because I'll have, hopefully be one of those guys. Nils Nairheim, Redondo Beach. To put some things in perspective here regarding concrete structures along the coastline, we should talk about other concrete structures along the coastline. For instance, the Manhattan Beach Pier originally was built in nineteen oh, in nineteen oh one, and was subsequently washed down, and it was rebuilt in nineteen twenty-two via a concrete structure. It has had two refurbishments since then. The Hermosa Beach Pier was built around the same time, in nineteen, early nineteen hundreds, has washed out a couple of times, and then they found some grant money, funny enough, along with some oil money, and some state wildland funds money, and they rebuilt that pier out of concrete in nineteen sixty-five. And it's gone, went over a three million dollar refurbishment in nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-eight, they spent the three million dollars or so to refurbish that. There's a nine-story condo building, the last nine-story condo building built along the coastline, that's also made around in the nineteen sixties, and that's also still alive and well today, because they're all doing, all three of those concrete structures have made the appropriate maintenance to them as they've gone along. So just wanted to keep that in perspective along the way as we talk about our concrete structures along the pier, or along the ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did you make a motion to receive and file?
I just wanna add, you know, since we're gonna spend money, is the location of the current parking structure ideal? Because that's prime ocean view, and why are we using it to park cars? So my question is, if we're gonna use money, whether to upgrade it? We have to make sure that the location is at this time, in two thousand sixteen, I'm looking forward. Is that the ideal location? Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to receive and file. All of us in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Let's move on. It's only, it's almost eleven o'clock. It's up to you, Stephen Proud, again, we're, discussion of possible action on waterfront revitalization project contracts and agreement, a fourth amendment to the reimbursement agreement, and so on and so forth. So go ahead and give us the staff report.
Stephen Proud, Waterfront and Economic Development Director. So this agenda item is really three separate actions that we're bringing to the council for your consideration this evening. The fourth amendment to the reimbursement agreement, the third amendment with CDM Smith for Environmental Consulting Services, and the fifth amendment to an exclusive negotiating agreement. The city in two thousand thirteen entered into the exclusive negotiating agreement, the reimbursement agreement, and a memorandum of understanding with Centracal as part of our initial agreements to begin to move the project forward. There have been subsequent amendments to those documents, and what we're bringing to you tonight is another series of amendments. Perhaps taking them one at a time, we could start with the reimbursement agreement. The reimbursement agreement is a binding agreement, and it establishes a budget for the city's environmental review and project processing that commits Centracal to reimburse the city for the costs associated with an approved budget. The current reimbursement agreement that we have in place with Centracal today is at two point two, roughly two point two million dollars, and this fourth amendment to the reimbursement agreement would increase that budget by approximately six hundred and eleven thousand dollars to a little over two point eight million dollars. And largely, that increase in the reimbursement agreement budget is to accommodate some of the additional costs that have been incurred as part of the environmental review process associated with the project. So there have been several components of the environmental review, not the least of which the number of alternatives that were studied, which expanded the timeline associated with the project, additional technical reviews that were necessary. We did add some time to the public comment period, we did add additional public meetings, we expanded our mailings. So there are significant costs that were associated with, and continue to be associated with, the environmental review period. This reimbursement agreement would increase the amount of money available to complete the environmental review process, not only for CDM Smith, which is the contract amendment before you, but would also provide funding for some of the legal environmental review work that's necessary to go along with the environmental review project. So, again, what you're looking at is an increase in the reimbursement agreement budget of approximately six hundred thousand dollars, from two point two million dollars to approximately two point eight million dollars. The second item, which is related to that, and which I've been alluding to, is a contract amendment with CDM Smith. CDM Smith is the environmental consultant that was selected by the city to conduct our environmental review. As you know, the draft EIR was published, today was the close of the public comment period, at five thirty today. So we continue to work on that, getting ready to prepare now for the response to comments, production of the final EIR, and then taking that through the review period with the Harbor Commission, and perhaps ultimately for your deliberation as well. So there has been an expansion in that scope of work, in, in addition to the lengthening of the contract time, and that is resulting in an amendment to that contract that would increase the contract from approximately a little over one point one million dollars to nearly one point six million dollars. So that's a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase to that contract. It's a substantial increase, but there has been a substantial amount of work that has been added to that contract to complete the environmental review process. I think, by all accounts, we've, as Aaron has mentioned in many of our public meetings, far and away the most comprehensive document that the city's prepared in terms of an environmental review document. So that's the second action that's before you, would be a contract amendment with CDM Smith, to allow that contract expansion to occur. And then the final agreement that's before you is an amendment to the exclusive negotiating agreement. The exclusive negotiating agreement is, it's a binding agreement between the city and the developer, and, and basically what it says is that we'll deal exclusively with the developer during the E and A period of time. So they make a good faith effort in terms of the money that they expend on the project. The city demonstrates its commitment to the developer to go through that process with them. The current exclusive negotiating agreement expires on August fifth of two thousand sixteen. The proposed amendment to the exclusive negotiating agreement would extend the term of that agreement to December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. We think this is important for a couple of reasons. We think, one, we are going to work our hardest to get all of the work completed that we need to do on the environmental review plus, process, plus any of the transaction documents that would be necessary for both the Harbor Commission and your consideration as part of the project. Our goal would be to try to complete that before August, but if we have any hiccups along the way that would trip us up in terms of timing, this would give us a little bit of an extra cushion in terms of that. It also lines up well with the current contract that we have with our environmental review consultant, CDM Smith. That contract runs through November eighteenth of two thousand sixteen, so this would set those two time periods very close together, so that the environmental review contract and the exclusive negotiating agreement would run very closely together. And we think, given the level of effort, it shows our commitment to our development partner, and given the millions of dollars they've already spent on the project, as you can see, two point two million dollars just in the current reimbursement agreement, that, that demonstrates their commitment to the project as well. So that's a, a fairly abbreviated conversation relative to those three documents. There's more we could tackle in terms of Q and A, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Everything went that fast, we wouldn't need to extend. But, you know, I think it's, it's reasonable, some of you in the room may not agree with that, and some of the people at home may not agree with it, but I think it's a, it's just, we've added a lot of items to this EIR. Our staff has, our council has, a lot of more requests, and it's, and it's a lot of money they are putting up, and this project isn't exactly steamrolling towards bulldozers in the ground in December, anyway. So, you know, I would, I would support this, and I think it's a prudent thing to do and fair thing to do. So, are there lights, sir? Bill?
Well, I'd be curious to hear what the public has to say, but I will certainly support the reimbursement agreement amendments, and I'll certainly support the third amendment to the contract with CDM. But I think it's premature to be extending our exclusive negotiating agreement with Centracal. Yeah, I can remember voting on this, I think it was in October of two thousand fourteen, to extend the exclusive negotiating agreement all the way to August, almost two years. And as far as I'm concerned, the, the lining up is close enough for the environmental impact report to get done. It looks like it might get done, anyway, in time for the E and A. And regardless, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna extend it in January, maybe later, maybe, you know, closer to May or something like that. It really looks like, for some reason, we need to extend it, but, yeah, this project has changed so much. And I, I, I don't even know how much I can go into it, but this project has changed, it's changing more, and, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna support extending the exclusive negotiating agreement at this particular point in time.
Any lights? Okay, first one up, Suzanne McKeon.
There's been so many topics tonight that I don't even really know where we are on the agenda, and when I filled out the card, I just skipped the whole first batch, so I guess that's why I'm here now. But really, I just would like to say that I agree with what Councilman Rand said, so, and as you probably already know, I'm very much against this project. And I love, I love our quaint rustic old pier, and the beautiful old buildings that are iconic and legendary. And I wanna preserve it, and just revitalize the pier, not supersize it. And, you know, we can all get together and economically fix the parking garage. So, you know, I'm, I just don't even wanna do business with Centracal, and I just can't So, you know, I'm, I just don't even wanna do business with Centracal, and I just can't wait to kick them out of town. Thank you.
Okay, Eugene Solin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. Planning to fail is, planning to, failing to plan is planning to fail. We need a strategic plan for the entire harbor area, not just piecemeal crammed on top of the water, and a shopping center at that, and it is a shopping center. The International Council of Shopping Centers defines it that way. The AECOM report compares it to that. The Urban Land Institute, if you were gonna ensure it, the occupancy and composition of it would make it a lesser risk retail strip shopping center. Why are we gonna grant this to Centracal without some concessions on their part? What have they responded to in the community comments? Have they shown a true commitment to the community by agreeing to long-term leases with all of the businesses? No. Have they offered to not, sign an agreement not to sell their entitlements after they earn them on a long-term basis for a specified period of time? No. Let's, why would we weaken our negotiating position and offer this gift?